Okay, so 2019 budget.
Yes.
Um salaries were numbers Candy sent out plus, so that's way through and there. Otherwise, everything is the same except for travel expense. And I've increased it again for two reasons. Number one, next year's legislative year. And they've decided to appoint me chairman of the recorders legislative committee. So if we have legislation, it would probably mean several trips to Bismarck. Hopefully, we don't, because I don't want to go through that again real soon, because I did that last time. And then the other reason is, uh, next year, I will also in June move up in the recorders association. I'll actually be the president of the recorders association. And the association sends the president and the delegate to the IGO conference. And I'm having a blank on what the I stands for, but it's of government officials. So it's recorders, it's clerks, it's election officials, and it's a national conference. And several recorders have been there and they find it to be very valuable to see what's happening in the nation. So the association pays a thousand dollars of those expenses. And then they ask that your county, um, cover the rest. Um, there's a registration fee, of course, the flights. It's in Houston, so I'm hoping that flights are going to be more reasonable, because Houston is a more common destination out of here. And then, um, the motel room, um, the delegate, um, we've actually become friends, so we're willing to share a room. So we'll save some money by splitting the cost of the rooms while we're there. So, um, I'm hoping this should cover it. And then the only other one was the end room budget, which I also left the same. Um, I do have over forty thousand dollars in that account right now, but I've got my scanning project. Stage one is done, and I just submitted that. We have stage two and stage three left, um, but about half of it is paid for. So even after that, I'm not gonna, the balance of the account will not go under forty thousand. So then I just budget, you know, for any expenses that might arise that can be paid out of that account, so. And then me at the bottom?
Any questions? Okay.
Thanks, guys.
Thank you, Steve. Steve?
Hello?
Hello?
Okay, the information technology budget, I guess, the salary, whatever Candy sent out. And overall, the budget is down. The rest is down, and I guess mostly just shifted some numbers around, but it's overall down. Guess no real big projects anticipated this year for the IT.
Okay, any questions on the IT portion of the budget for Steve? So like our equipment costs are anticipating of being down with some cuts.
Yeah, and things are really shifting nowadays from, I guess, more maintenance fees for versus buying stuff and then pulling on it for candy.
Okay. Okay, GIS.
And same with the salary and the budget is down. I guess the twenty-five-hundred that the city has agreed to pick up. So otherwise, that's, I guess, the same as last year.
Was that for that, um, anniversary, uh, subscription?
Yeah, that would be the online parcel viewer software, I guess.
Okay, any questions for Steve on that portion?
Does that annual trip that you go to that conference, does that come out of your IT budget or your?
That's out of the GIS budget.
Okay, but you don't have a travel?
No, it's not split out.
Okay.
But yeah, the rest of the, the maintenance for the, the other software and I guess the plotter supplies and traps are all out of.
Other than one.
No, it's a little miscellaneous ones.
Okay.
Okay. Any, any other questions? Steve, none, okay, take your seat. Dan?
Stacy. They should be eight years.
Yeah, the, uh, same thing with the salaries, uh, is what Candy sent. I left in the salary portion of the money that was allotted last year for a second person to come on, even though we didn't find anywhere or didn't work at that, uh, most likely won't get nothing, uh, find anybody this year or, or go that way, since my retirement is kinda on a back burner. Uh, wife says I gotta continue to work. She's a slave driver, I don't know how you guys handle your wives, but. Uh, so then, as the rest of the budget goes, uh, I increased travel, just like what Katie said. I mean, there's costs, uh, uh, have gone up, especially with the, the, our, our conferences, spring and fall conference. They, uh, are now billing us because the, the state used to cover it. State mandates the conference and the education material, but they quit paying for it because of budget cuts. So they, the North Dakota veterans, they put the cost onto us, onto the counties now. So there, there's an increase there. Um, office supplies and telephone, I increased a hundred dollars just, uh, based on the usage. And I believe, uh, there's a discrepancy between the miscellaneous and the office supplies. I think one bill got paid out of one fund that should have been paid out of the other. So we, we have a surplus in one area and a shortage in the other, so, but that should be worked out and get it washed out, so. Uh, just a slight increase for the overall budget then.
Stacy, did you, you increased your salary by the?
By the what Candy said, yeah.
Did you also in?
I did not increase the other.
So this is the exact same number that we allocated this last year?
Yes, yes.
You're not retiring?
Officially, I'll, I'll probably get sick and get in the hospital before I retire, so then that's when I'll retire.
Could you give us a date?
Not quite. The wife has said I am not retiring next January, so there we go. Maybe February, I don't know. But we'll, we'll, whenever it does come, we'll get plenty of notice here and, uh, we'll find that second person to get broken a little bit.
You've got this figure, twenty-one dollars and seven-ten for, uh, possible training replacement? You've got that figured?
That's the one that I left in there, yeah, it's in the total, yeah.
Make sure you let us know.
I think the, uh, let me, I gotta broke out. My salary is at fifty-two, one sixty-six and eighty-eight cents. That's based on the numbers Candy gave me. I would've used more zeros myself, but we use what Candy gave me.
Listen, news to me that you're not retiring, I know, I thought.
Well, it's been.
Not that I want you to, don't get me wrong.
Well, wait a damn minute here. I want to stick around because the wife says I have to, that's the only reason.
She wants you out of the house?
Mm-hmm, yeah. She's paying for our vacations, I'm paying for everything else, so.
Are you just having so much fun at your job now?
It, I find it necessary for what I'm doing now. It's getting so frustrating with the VA and what the VA's doing to veterans. Making it much, much harder to get benefits. I don't know what the hell's happened just this, since spring this year, but we are having a battle, the VA, in so many, uh, ways. And then you listen to Trump say we have to take care of our veterans, and they're not. They're, they're dropping the ball here big time. So we end up going to battle to, to try and get the benefits for everybody now. It just, uh, it got so damn tough this year.
Like, my understanding is there's significant staffing problems at the VA?
Oh, hell yeah, yeah. It, it's all, they're trying to use this, what they call care in the community, to pass on the veterans' healthcare out to private sector. Well, there's paying of the bills issues, there's scheduling issues. They hire contractors out of Florida, Texas, and California to find providers in North Dakota. But then we're finding out that they're setting up, they're flying in doctors and nurses, set up a temporary clinic. Bring the veteran in, and then they deny the benefits. And then we have to go back and fight it all over. And it's, it's so damn frustrating at times that, um, I got hundreds of stories that, uh, or it's just getting kinda sad that, uh, what they're putting veterans through right now.
Oh, we need you to keep fighting then.
That's why I'm.
That's why you're here.
The wife says I gotta stick it up.
Really appreciate it.
You're telling us this is bad knowledge when you came on to this job?
It's worse now.
Oh, it's worse now?
I had, when I first came in here, I had a lot of catching up to do, because there were so many veterans just not being taken care of. Well, now we've got them, pretty much, they're coming in, uh, camp rafting, I'm getting, uh, you know, ten, twelve a month retirees coming in to, to apply for benefits. Now, in June, I wasn't here for the meeting on the third, but I had over a hundred and twenty people coming in a month of June.
Good.
Mm, well, yeah, good. They're coming in to get their stuff taken care of, but.
But if you're not getting any support from the national level, is, so far, you can take?
Yeah, we're, we're, what's being done is their benefit is being prolonged, just taking what should have taken three to six months, it's taken over a year. It shouldn't be that way. But like you said, staffing problems is a lot of it. They've cut, uh, there are more buildings, less people.
Okay.
Okay?
Any questions?
Four.
Enjoy your golf.
Bill? Little Bill, Bill.
I don't know what to tell you about mine.
Somebody have to leave. That one's?
Oh?
Sorry. It's over here.
I don't know who. Want to play a pay up there, you mean?
Yeah.
Okay.
Just because you lost it.
Oh, it is?
And otherwise, I won't be able to.
There it was. Oh, you don't have a pay up for any? Okay, oh, you need your page numbers, I believe it's yellow, you don't.
Forty-two.
Forty-two. Okay.
Of course, that's since your last meeting, you heard of the retirement, so that changes the whole budget entirely. Um, my salary and Brenda's salary, that's based on that forty percent. Remember when our district director was here in that year, Association of Counties, uh, State Conference, that's how that came about. Cindy's forty-eight, that's put, given to us from Candy. Insurance, I, she just told me to put in what it was, and, and of course, you know, that'll be about her soon. So everything else stayed the same throughout. So, um, until we figure out what's gonna happen with Brenda's position. And he asked if he could get on your August seventh agenda to talk to you about that. Okay, so my budget's kind of tackled, to pay the lease.
Well, I mean, you, you got it set up, so if we do hire somebody, then we've got the salary slotted in, and if we just sit for a while, then.
Yeah.
He's got a little access, like you said, and that's.
Yeah, and we do have the extension, as I said, four mils to work with for whoever we would hire when that time comes. So if you got some questions, I can answer them, but sorry, I can't give you something more firm at the present.
There's no doubt we'll fill that spot, right?
Well, I, Ron and I talked today, and of course, you know, we gotta wait till the official retirement day, and then we proceed from there, but, um, I, I thought at the county level, I said, I thought our commissioners were pretty much in favor of keeping somebody there, and I, and I'm not asking that today. And he says, you know, right now, we have twelve open positions in the state, and I didn't like him to say that, so I don't know what that means. I know they're short of funds, so.
They can't fill them, or?
Nope, they don't have funds to fill.
Oh, it means, it means they don't have money to pay you.
Yeah. So that'll be something that you and him can talk about on the seventh of August, of how to proceed.
Four each numbers have grown, right?
Will still keep going.
I mean, it's grown in numbers? By how much?
That I don't know.
Probably?
I don't know. Twenty percent, I would, I'm not fairly a guess. That's Brenda's department, and the only thing I deal with, because of the shooting sports and, uh, livestock, I would.
And my daughter-in-law said there's twenty-six in her book.
Yeah, kids everywhere.
Does that matter, huh?
Great.
That's fantastic.
Yeah, I, I think, I think it has increased, you know, at least twenty percent, so.
Yeah.
Um, that, that is good to see. So hopefully, uh, Andy and she could come up with.
Sure.
Ways to keep that position.
There's a sheriff?
Right. So has he, has he talked to the officer's office then to get on that, or, or?
I, I've talked to Nathan about getting us on.
I haven't known it.
Yeah.
Well, we'll deal with it when it comes, I guess, talk to him in a minute. Fill some questions out on the seventh. Okay, any questions for Bill on, uh, the budget?
And the salary that was taken for us, they're using a one-and-a-half percent, um, increase. I don't know that we'll get that at the state level, but that's what they, they use this year for numbers.
Okay. Right there, here, thank you, Bill. Okay, Kerry's not here, we got her listed, four thirty, so we're just, we're going, cause John's not here, but Rob is. Next on the list, a little bit of Rob, we'll hop down.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
So I'm not exactly sure what you have in front of you as far as for numbers.
One point three, just a bulk number.
Yeah, that's, we come up with about one point two five, and that's based solely off of just incarceration rates. That doesn't cover rent or any of the other expenses incurred by the sheriff's office. Um, I do think that that may be a little high, looking at how we project all our numbers. Uh, to this point this year, uh, the total number of mandates that we've had are seven thousand five hundred and sixty-nine for Ramsey County. Those aren't all billable mandates, though, and that's the number that, that Peggy historically has used to determine what the, the budget for the next year will be. The total number of billable mandates we have was just under seven thousand. Um, so there's a, there's a difference there. Um, and the number that we, that I'm presenting is gonna be high, because it's our preliminary number, as we work to try and adjust our budget a little bit. Uh, but I figure that we might be able to bring it down upwards of close to a hundred thousand dollars, just based off of how we're projecting the numbers. But then again, you look at, uh, crime, and you can't project crime, and what's gonna happen necessarily.
So seven, seven thousand man dollars?
Mandates, so that's.
There it is.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
So seven thousand, that's a seventy-five dollar incarceration rate at this point, is what our bill is.
Right.
Basically, plus all of the.
Yeah, and that's just the hassle.
Yeah, that's iconic residential area.
Yeah, you're on pace of over fifteen thousand mandates this year.
Sure.
It's also not including medical.
Yes.
Right. So yeah, that's in, over and above that figure as far as.
Yeah, that's just the baseline fee, just physically having to sit there, it has nothing to do with.
If we incur medical costs for that inmate, or, that's about the only other expense I can think of that we have with the, with that bill.
Does the, the rent comes out of your budget, correct?
Yes, I believe so.
Uh, the question that I have is, um, you know, looking back historically across the numbers of the last few years, were kind of within reason increasing the budget by about ten percent per year, give or take?
Over the last, probably, two years now, yeah. Before that, it was pretty static. Uh, I think you were sitting around on average with about ten thousand mandates.
Okay.
Now we've gone up, uh, it went up twenty percent to twelve hundred, or twelve thousand mandates last year, and now we're, we're on pace to eclipse fifteen thousand this year.
Okay.
So it's probably been closer to twenty percent.
Okay, so in your estimation, Andrew, you just mentioned you can't predict crime. Is this something that the, the county should be prepared to continue? In other words, for the foreseeable future, the next several years, I mean, you're gonna be seeing these incremental hikes of that same magnitude?
And, and I would, I'd caution against doing that, just based on the fact that I think we have, you know, our population's gonna be limited. We're gonna hit a cap as far as seeing that type of population within the region. Um, I just think that there's been more presence, especially with the direct task force out there now. Uh, I think it'll plateau off. I don't, I don't foresee it continuing to grow like it has for our local population.
Sure, yeah, and I guess, and I understand that, right? I mean, because when you look at like epidemiology, you know, if, if you start paying people to go find, people who have HIV, you're gonna suddenly find a lot of people with HIV, but that doesn't mean that there are more people with HIV. Whereas you've got a certain number of criminals, you're gonna find some. Um, my question really was then, where are we along that S curve, right? So from before you're looking, to when you're looking, to when you found most, you know?
In other words, are we gonna cap over any time soon?
Um.
Sheriff.
Yeah, and, and maybe the sheriff can attest to that a little bit more, being, knowing what they're seeing out on the streets, and, and kind of the intelligence that he would have versus what I'm seeing.
It's more of, uh, what the state is doing with the, uh, the sentencing guidelines as far as who can, you know, they've decreed, they've reduced sentences to where a crime that was sentenced to the pen can no longer be sentenced there, so they're sentenced to more local time. And I think I attribute a lot of our increase to some of that, where they're spending a lot more local time instead of.
We're not necessarily picking up anymore, well, we're probably picking up a few more.
Maybe a few, I don't think, I don't think it's a drastic number.
Not a ton more, but we're just.
But we're how, we're, we're being, we're being forced to house more here, because the state is refusing to take them, uh, to reduce their prison. But, and I think that's why I say that's the trend we have to be aware of, more so than.
Our, 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 our local criminal act is pretty, pretty steady.
Sure.
I mean, it isn't, we don't have these big rises, and it's, it's not a, I think it's more of the fact that we're seeing backlash from not being able to get them under places. And I think that's why I think it's gonna be a little more of a, in the future.
I think that's gonna continue to be something we're gonna push on to.
And that's the concern I have with, with not maintaining a little increase, because that's, it's nothing, we're doing different here, it's just that we're being.
Yeah, no, 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 this is, this is not me, this is not the intelligence.
I'm just trying to explain why we're trying, you know, I think that's why we're going up so much more.
Right.
It's because they're giving the sentence of so much more local time versus, okay, we ship them to the state pen.
And, and, and of course, my concern with, with the whole thing is, is the county budget can handle this right now, but there are only so many ten to twenty percent hikes on a big number like this before all of a sudden we're, we're facing tough challenges. And so I'm just trying to wrap my mind around where we're at and where we're headed.
One of the things I, I think that you'll see that'll help to start offset that is that the courts are starting to change their mindset a little bit, more to the home confinement, more to the, you know, not incarcerating people that, that don't necessarily need to be incarcerated, which will help kind of offset that number a little bit. Uh, they're a little slow getting to that point, but I've started to see it a little bit more, especially over the last month or so. Uh, and part of that, too, is we need to have more conversations with the courts as far as what we provide or have available to them as options versus having them incarcerated, like the GPS home confinement, or, you know, reentry is something that we're starting to utilize extensively for, uh, Ramsey County. And I think they're gonna continue to see a little bit of a savings that way as well.
Okay, and how has that change of policy that came down from, from the judge been working? I know that it started this a little off.
Up to twenty-four-seven? Well, that's a whole difference.
I understand that, but I'm just, I'm thinking about.
We, we, it's completely handled.
So it has solved?
He gave us all the, all the information, and we're taking care of it.
Yep.
It is solved. Because he gave us the authority to do what we should have been done in the first place, and it's.
Yeah, no, I know, I just, I realized that.
No, it's all taken care of, and things are running smoothly right now. So, um, one thing with the jail population is that it is very a roller coaster. I mean, summer is typically busy, so I know the last jail bill was rather, the highest I've ever seen it. Um, but then come probably September, October, it's probably gonna go back down to where it was a couple of months ago, which is in the seventies, or maybe the eighties. You know, it does do with a kind of a, it's not a constant.
And thinking along the same lines, I did run, before I came up here, I did run the numbers for the last three years, and split it in the first half of the year and the second half of the year. And the difference is really only about a hundred mandates between the first half of the year and the second half of the year. But then again, you're splitting it basically right down the middle in summer, so you're catching both ends.
Yeah, if it took the six months in the middle, you probably have a peak.
Right.
And I think when I, when I visited with Candy about that number that was, you know, the one point three, you know, that was basically based off, well, the last two months have been in, almost two months ago was ninety, uh, last month was a hundred and three, I believe, or, am I close? I think is what, I mean, but that's what she's, okay, if we're gonna have, we're gonna have to budget for one point three, if this is how this is gonna continue to go on.
Right.
So that's why the one point three came into play, so.
I think it just stands for the reason that every year, you know, the cost is gonna probably incrementally move up instead of, instead of all of a sudden trying to hold steady and then jump it every third year or something. You're just gonna have to keep moving, unfortunately, because we're, I think we're just gonna continue to see pressure downwards, you know?
I agree.
And, and, yeah.
It's, they're gonna, they're gonna de, I shouldn't say decriminalize, but they're gonna keep, take more things and push it back down to where it's gonna be those locally. I mean, I, I just, it, they're, it's a way for them to contain costs, and we don't have that ability to contain.
Well, that's the whole point behind that justice reinvestation, reinvestment program, is to get more services locally, so you don't have to send them away.
And we're gonna have to continue to look at some of those home confinement type options and try our best to not keep the place full, uh, to keep it full with other people's people.
Uh, the only other thing that I would add, and Ed and Mark might be able to back nip a little bit on this, is, is there has been no discussion as far as adjusting the rate. You know, the seven, the rate that we have established, uh, I'm comfortable with where they're at right now. I see no need to be tinkering with those at this point. And they're, they're spot on as far, maybe a little on the low end of the market rate for the daily rate for incarceration. Uh, if we do any messing with the rates, it's gonna be for other agencies, so.
Okay. It's good to know.
Thank you.
Any further questions for Rob on the LEC budget?
Did you hear from Bob?
Talked to him at noon today. Um, no information, he's not gonna have his report done already, so.
Okay, further questions? Steve, none, thank you, Rob.
Thank you, Rob.
Okay, well, the sheriff, who is, because technically, it's Carrie's, it says for her, you're gonna.
Okay.
Sheriff?
I thought you were gonna go, but you can go to her, she's here.
No.
I can wait. Mine won't take long, I can probably, well, I don't think it will.
It's not gonna make plans, it's not.
Depending on you guys.
Okay, we'll, we'll make it quick. It's not gonna go quick here.
I didn't really change, I changed a few line items to adjust for, uh, what I did was I looked at where we're at this year with our budgets, and if it was close to fifty percent, I increased that line item somewhat to adjust for that for next year. Uh, for example, in the vehicle maintenance, equipment and supplies, no, vehicle ma, vehicle expenses, the very bottom one on my page, anyway. You know, we're at fifty-five thousand for this year, we're already, we already spent thirty thousand of it, which is just about sixty percent. So I increased that five thousand dollars to cover, that's where our gas and our maintenance and stuff comes out of, just to make sure we aren't short next year, since we're over half this year. Uh, the rest, uh, the other one I changed the most was I increased our travel budget from thirty-five hundred to five thousand, because we're trying to have to send our deputies to schools that we have to provide housing for. Uh, so that's the reason for that increase. And we're starting to have to pay for motel bills and things where the state is kind of not having, posting the housings anymore. Um, salaries, I just went with Candy's numbers. Task force stayed the same. Everything else is pretty much, we're, we're doing okay with, and I don't think I changed anything, uh, on any of the rest. Miscellaneous went up two thousand, because, uh, we're finding out that some of the equipment for our squad cars, traditionally, we've been able to reuse cages and center consoles and things like that when we refit a new car. We haven't, they will not do that anymore. You have to buy new.
Compliant with sequestrons.
Well, they're saying with the side, with the side curtain airbags that are coming in vehicles, they're not compliant with the, so every year we have to buy, and the cage is about a thousand bucks. So if I get two cars, I need two thousand, that's where the increase is to start paying for. Center consoles can be anywhere from a hundred and fifty to five hundred, that holds your radio and your light bar controls and things that have to go into these, so.
I got some old steel for hard.
Have it, have it.
Real cheap.
Have it, have it.
Let's do it.
But anyway, so, so minimal, minimal, there are some minimal, you know, some, some changes, but it's basically because the cost of things are going up.
Okay, Steve, is there gonna be any, uh, changes down the road for, um, updating radios?
You know, we're not, we're not sure where that's going, so we're holding off on anything.
Okay.
In fact, they, they recommended we not buy anything until they know whether this, uh, siren program comes into play or not. Uh, as far as, because if we go out and spend, well, they're about twenty-five hundred, three thousand dollars a unit. Um, so if you spend something and it's not compatible, then all of a sudden you gotta spend it again. And we aren't having any issues with ours, so we're not planning on spending any until we know exactly what we need to buy, so we buy the appropriate equipment when the time does come.
But they don't know when those changes are coming down the road?
As far as the siren project, I know they funded the, the, uh, the, the first part of it, which is just the initial, it's might, like, one-tenth of the whatever they had allotted, and they, maybe this time they'll decide if they're gonna fund the rest or not.
Yeah, I think they're trying to take it in stages, basically, just because.
It's like a hundred and eighty million, I think, total?
Yeah, it's just such a big dollar figure that they're just trying to incrementally pay off.
And so it's been, you know, just not buying anything right now, because we don't know where it's going. So right now, I would say, no, we're not planning on. If one goes down, we have to replace it, yes, we'll buy something, but we have been, uh, pretty lucky so far. I do have a couple spares, too, so we just throw them in if we have to. I do have a couple spares too, so we just throw them in if we have to for now.
Steve, tell us a little bit about the drug task force, is it going pretty well or?
Yes, very well.
You're leaving it the same budget wise?
Well, I did call Travis and ask him and, and with our new hire that just came on here, you know, she's still learning, so she isn't really, well, she's still in training, but she's catching on very quickly. So as things move on, she's gonna start moving and, and, you know, they're, they're doing very well. They're, uh, they've got a pretty good program going and they're busy.
Do they have enough help?
Right now, he said they're okay. So we're not, that's why we're not increasing anything or, I don't think we need to go anywhere just yet.
In your opinion, you feel we're getting pretty good results?
I have a hundred percent, because that's all they do is, and it takes, our guys don't have to, you know, try to, those get pretty involved when they start, you know, a lot of extra hours, so, yeah, I think we're getting more than enough for our money worth.
Oh, yeah, so the permissioner delivers and, well, that's a big part of why our jail bill's going up.
Some of it, yes. But realistically, they aren't, they aren't going out and hammering people, you know, they have to build a foundation for their case, so they're, you know, and then when even, even when they do, you know-
I'm not saying that's a bad deal.
No, no, but it, it's not going up expen-, really largely, but it's, it's going up some, but I don't think it's a drastic amount. I mean, it's not like they're, you know, increasing about ten percent, I don't even think.
The community wants this.
The community needs this, I think.
They want it too.
I'm sure they do want it, because it's, it's a rampant problem, and we need to keep moving with it, I, in my opinion.
Your salaries are, you're not increasing staff?
No. No, sir. No, same staff, just-
Vehicles, you're just maintaining or are you really gonna add one?
No, we should be good.
Regular replacement cycle then?
Yes.
So we'll replace what, one next year or two?
Two. If we're getting two older ones, they're- We're starting to get to the point where I think we need to do two a year because they're getting so many, you know, we're driving so much.
I remember we talked about that when we had the motor car on the other one.
Matt, anybody wanna volunteer to go to Detroit, Michigan tomorrow morning at seven AM?
What's that for?
Go get a- Go get a prisoner.
In Detroit, Michigan?
Yeah, Detroit, Michigan. Gotta have him back here by next Wednesday, so.
No, I do not volunteer.
No?
I'll come here and ride with ya. I've seen that side of the world.
But that's just an example of things that pop up, you know, and it's just like, we gotta go, because the judge says we'll get them, so.
That was your idea?
Anyway.
Okay, any further questions for the sheriff? Seeing up.
Thanks, sir.
Thank you. Thank you.
Okay, being it's four thirty, then we will move on to Carrie.
All right.
Wow, thanks for coming.
Well, thank you for having me. Um, I know Candy had wanted me to, to come, I'm not sure what information she's already given you. I don't have the actual numbers yet for the health renewal, uh, for January one. Um, I know that there was a change in the, how the state wants you guys to get your budgets in earlier, so that kind of puts us a little bit of a crunch because of course we don't wanna underestimate just because we've only got seven months of DAB and not even completed yet, you know, for the renewal. But I think they gave an estimate for the health, I don't even know what that is, no, I can't remember what I told Candy. Did she put that out there, was it three, four and eight?
I reuse eight.
Eight?
I believe.
And I kinda told her, I said, it might not be eight, but you know, err on the side of caution just in case if it's four, you know, great. But the other thing that Candy and I have been talking about, um, and she has had employees visit with her was, and the idea of having Ramsey County put in dental envision for benefits for the employees. And right now there are some employees that do those benefits on a voluntary basis where they pay for it out of their paycheck. Um, and I think she said it gets to be kind of a best, those a lot of times are maybe as full encompassing of, of dental envision plans as what we offer on the employer paid side. And one of the things is when we have these employer paid dental and employer paid vision, an employer has to contribute towards at least a single plan. Now, right now at Ramsey County, obviously everybody's premiums are paid in full health, doesn't matter what classic coverage they take. When we were talking about it, when I said, you know, if they wanna look at adding maybe dental envision for their employees, a single dental plan runs the total premium is like thirty-five dollars and ninety cents for a month. A vision plan is twelve dollars and ninety cents. So for about forty-eight dollars and forty cents, that would be like what the single plan would be, you know, if, if the county only wanted to pay towards the single, and then if they want a family plan, they would take the rest out of their paycheck on a pre-tax basis, but the employer then is actually contributing towards those benefits. Um, now on the employer paid dental, um, the nice thing about that is, um, if we put into effect January one, everybody on the plan January one has the benefits available to them, there's no waiting periods for any major services. Um, they get all their preventative stuff done at a hundred percent. Um, we give them fifteen hundred dollars per person on the plan to use for dental work in a calendar year. Um, if they have a filling or have a tooth pulled, Blue Cross would pay eighty percent, the member would pay twenty. Any major services, we're gonna pay half up to that maximum of fifteen hundred dollars. So if somebody goes in for a crown and root canal, it runs about eighteen hundred bucks, we're gonna pay half, we'll pay nine hundred, and then they'll still have six hundred bucks to use for the rest of the year on cleanings or, or whatnot. So with that dental plan, again, it's a fifteen hundred dollar, what we give per person on the plan, the cost is thirty-five ninety for a single. Um, if they wanted a family plan, um, that cost is seventy, let me grab that, it's ninety-two fifty for a family, and that would be a family of two, three, four, whatever it is, okay? Um, now, because you guys are self-funded, the nice thing about dental envision on a self-funded basis is all you're going to get billed each month from Blue Cross, it's actually on a weekly, would be only if there's claims that come through. So you guys would put money to this pot, you would, you know, like every month she puts in money for the health, you would put money in for dental envision, but you're not being paid, you're not, you're not paying us like a, per se, a monthly premium, per se. Okay, you're only paying Blue Cross if there's a claim that comes through that week. So really, if you've got people that aren't using the dental envision, you kind of almost are making your own money in that pot of money, because you're not paying us a flat premium every month. Does that make sense?
Yeah, it makes sense, but-
So, and on vision, remember for twelve dollars and ninety cents, they get an eye exam every year, doesn't matter their age, they get a hundred and fifty bucks to use for frames, but remember, maybe not every person on this plan would maybe utilize that eye exam every year, even though they get it. So you're only getting charged from Blue Cross as somebody has a claim for dental envision. It's different than health where you're paying us a monthly stop loss premium to have the stop loss coverage that you have, that's a fixed cost no matter what. Dental vision is you put money in that pot and you're only having money come out when there's a claim. And remember, they're max at fifteen hundred bucks a person regardless. They can't go past fifteen hundred of utilizing that kind of benefit, because that's what they have on dental. They can't go past, you know, a hundred and fifty on, on frames, they can't go past, you know, a hundred dollars on a, on a eye exam. So there's caps on those benefits. For a self-funded group, you're only paying if somebody utilizes the, the benefit, if they go in to have it done. So, um, it's a little more beneficial when you're self-funded, offer those benefits than if you weren't and you're paying Blue Cross premium dollars every month, whether people use it or not, you've just paid that money. So it was just something that we talked about, she's had employees that aren't happy with the voluntary dental envision that they have, plus the premiums are getting to be really expensive for the employees to buy those benefits out of their own paycheck. And that was kind of how this whole, this whole thing came up. So that's why she wanted me to kind of come, give you guys some information on the dental vision that we have available. Um, it would be outside of your stop loss, so when people have claims, it doesn't go towards that stop loss you have, it's out of stop loss, but it's still self-funded. So-
Carrie, do you know what the, uh, the price is right now for dental envision?
Um, I think it depends on what classic covers they have, but I did hear that Candy said somebody on a family policy was paying like a hundred and thirty-some dollars a month for a family dental plan.
Um, I believe in the back of your, um, budget books, there should be our current dental envision.
Okay.
And then, um, the information that Carrie had brought in. So it should show, should have something comparable.
And fifty bucks per employee?
No.
I, I said three, about seven employees.
Right.
So that's regular TDA.
Yeah, the TDA is our current, uh, dental.
One twenty-two right now?
Yeah, one twenty-two is our dental.
Just thirty dollars cheaper and then, uh-
Employees, uh, forty, seventy-one currently.
That's all.
Employee and family for a business.
And the one thing that we can look at, so what I, I just gave you the standard rate sheet for single and family, we can, when you're self-funded, we can look at that single plus dependent classic coverage for dental envision, I just don't have it on here because they would make it special for, for, for you guys. So anybody that has an employee plus child or children, just like you have for health, they wouldn't have to take a full family dental envision, they could take the single plus dependent, and that would save them some money also. So I'm waiting, I think it was gonna be next week, I should have the actual numbers of what all that, the, I just didn't have it back for today's meeting on that line of coverage, but right now I was just showing you single and family on that sheet I dropped off.
Okay, any questions, I guess?
Just to give the, the commission a sense of, uh, so thirty-five plus, oh, thirty-five seventy for dental plus, uh, twelve ninety for vision per individual is forty-eight dollars, ninety cents a month, seventy employees, uh, comes to three thousand, four hundred and twenty-three dollars per month, twelve months, that gives us forty-one thousand, seventy-six dollars a year to provide coverage for all the employees.
Yeah.
And that's, and that's at the individual representative level.
Yeah. And like I said, and that money technically would just go into your own pot of money that you guys have where you pay claims out of now, you're not paying that to Blue Cross until somebody utilizes that plan. And normally what we see is, even with a group this size, you're not gonna probably have forty-one thousand dollars worth of claims that come through out of that pot of money. So it's typically what we end up seeing. Like I said, not everybody, even though they have the benefits, not everybody thinks they go to the eye doctor even though they have the benefit, if they don't wear glasses, they don't think they need to go. Not everybody goes to the dentist even if they have it, we encourage that, but it's only gonna be utilized, you know, you'll take money out only when there's a claim that comes through. So.
Okay.
Any other questions on those dentists? But like I said, once I get the final numbers, I will get them, I, I know Candy's out, I will get those to Nathan so that he can get the final numbers for you guys, because I think budgets have to begin by, is it August something now?
Tech, tech August.
Tech, okay. So I should have final numbers on that, probably next week.
Okay.
Okay? All right, thank you guys.
Okay. I have to track them across here.
Okay, we're gonna go next. John?
Perfect, perfect.
Page forty-seven in our budget.
Okay, well-
Second flight is-
The, um, gentlemen, the overall budget is pretty much a, pretty much a mirror of, um, what two thousand and eighteen has been, just for talking purposes, we're at about forty-five percent of our expenses currently through half the year, so we're, uh, we're a little bit low budget on our expenses for this year so far, so that's good. But in, um, as far as, um, requesting funds from the county, we're handling everything pretty much, pretty much the same, a little bit of an increase. It equates to the, your proposed, uh, three mills, and that's the rural mill. Um, so we're looking at total revenues of about, just about ten thousand dollars more. The, um, you get into the salaries and whatever, that is all calculated by, Mr. Johnston at the city really don't have too much control over that, but it does include, uh, three full-time employees at the airport, our slash operations people. And, um, and then, uh, myself, there's, and I'm just, just working part-time, no many's or anything like that, so. So that actually helps budget out quite a bit. The, uh, total expenditures that we were looking at is an increase of about ten thousand, so we're real, real close to a wash as comparing the two years. And, uh, projecting, uh, a loss of about two thousand dollars, so. Pretty, uh, like I said, pretty similar to last year, don't see too much, uh, other going on, other than, uh, just like update you guys just a little bit. We are looking at some new snow removal equipment, the tune of six hundred and some thousand dollars, and, uh, we have a firm bid of, uh, six hundred and nine thousand for, it's a grader, tractor, blower and other pushers, things like that. Our equipment's like twenty years old or more out there, so it definitely needs to be updated. And money is getting tougher and tougher to, to get through, through the FAA funding for that as well as the aeronautics, so we're hoping we can get that taken care of. As far as, uh, any major projects on the ground, we really don't have any going on this year. We're gonna be doing a, they call a PCI, a payment, payment condition index. And, uh, then next year we would look at a crack ceiling operation and things on our runway, taxiway and so on.
John, you should, uh, mention that, that snow removal equipment primarily paid through a grant.
Yeah, it is through a grant. And it's ninety percent and then five percent by the, uh, aeronautics commission, and then the city picks up the other five percent on that.
Be a really good opportunity if we get selected for it.
Yeah.
Sounds very promising.
Every, everything we've heard has been positive so far, so that's, uh, that's really good.
Okay.
That's it in a nutshell, guys.
Any questions for John?
John, how are boardings been?
Boardings are down this year so far. Um, one of the things that, you know, we've been really pushing for, and it's a slow grow, is in discretionary money that you get from the FAA, if you have less than ten thousand boardings, you get a hundred and fifty thousand dollars to use on justified programs. Once you get over ten thousand boardings, you get a million dollars, and that's a, that's a big key. Right now, we are, through la-, last year, we were sitting at sixty-six hundred. And like I say, we're down a little bit this year. We took a look at what was going on and we kind of think that it has a lot to do with the University of North Dakota sports teams that haven't been flying out of Devils Lake, they're going to a different conference and haven't been u-, going west as much. And, uh, you know, when they pull up with a bus, there's thirty-five people, and if you got two buses that day, that, that really adds up in a hurry and, um, that's, I think that's had a big impact on us. We, we spend a lot of money on advertising, promoting, things like that, and, you know, we've been talking a little bit more about it at our, uh, at our board meetings, airport authority board meetings and, you know, we don't, we don't, as far as the airport, we get nothing out of it until we hit the ten thousand mark. It's, it's kind of like, uh, throwing money down a rattle for us, because there is no monetary return of any type until you do hit that top number. So, uh, but we, uh, we keep plugging away and promoting and trying to make it work.
Okay. Any further questions for John? Seeing up.
Thank you.
Thank you.
For coming in?
Yeah, thank you guys.
Heritage Center. Page fifty-eight. Hello.
Hi.
How are you?
Good, how are you doing?
Oh, not too bad. Okay.
Alright, so I think you guys have a copy of our budget, um, in front of you. Go ahead and take a look at that, I'll just give you a little bit of an update, um, of what's been going on at the Heritage Center. Um, we've had a lot of activity in the last three weeks, um, so, um, that's been a great sign. Um, and then, one of our biggest, uh, issues right now is our roof. So we finally were able to have somebody come and look at it, um, and he gave us the timeline of next week for coming to fix it. So we're very hopeful that, um, that can be fixed as soon as possible.
Who came and looked at it?
Mike Gilbertson.
Did you have any estimate?
He's actually donating his time.
Oh, great.
Um, yep, so he said he'll send about three guys over and he'll donate his time, and if it's a fix, that's great, and then if we get a hard rain and it's not fixed, then he'll have to send an estimate and we'll go from there.
Three days after that.
Mm-hmm.
Great, great. Good news.
Yep.
You did have interior damage?
I did, yes. We've got some mold right now on the walls where the water's coming in.
Yeah, and are you looking at, could it not be repaired or replaced, or?
We do, but we're trying to get the roof done first.
Sure.
Even with the rain that we had last weekend, it was, it's coming down. You know, and you can, if you drive by the front of Heritage Center, you can see on the outside of the building where the stone is actually saturated in trouble.
How does this budget compare with, uh, last year's?
It's pretty close to what last year's budget is. Um, you'll notice that our payroll is, uh, at sixty-five right now, and that is based on our projection for Mandy eventually being a full-time director and then having, um, either another full-time or two part-time employees. We wanted to, um, give Mandy the opportunity to work on some grants writing and see what other funding we can get in for programs that we know that we have things going on at the museum and, um, and that there is a need for that many staff.
What is going on at the museum? How many visitors do you have?
John, can I give you one there? Yeah, we've been, um, up and running again for a little bit, over three weeks, um, since we've had over fifty visitors. Um, for Crazy Days, we did, um, some shock art fun, um, so the steps and the sidewalks got, um, decorated. Um, there was a big turnout for that. On Sunday, Senator Hightkamp held a small business meeting, um, at the Heritage Center, so, um, Corwin and I get more events and more things going.
Is there a fee for that one to use that?
A rental fee, yes.
And then, uh, they're not sending the meeting minutes anymore to the auditor?
You know, that, that week, that wasn't something that we knew that was happening, so we looked at that and apologized.
Okay. Any, uh, further questions on the budget?
Push it forward.
Okay.
Just on the roof. Give us the report back when it takes relaxation.
Yeah, if you can get that for free, that'd be fantastic. You want some?
And, and the damage estimate on the inside damage.
Yeah.
Is that something, uh, insurance would, would possibly cover?
Depending on whether or not it's about the conduct.
Sure.
The big bright spot in getting that roof fixed is for the past few years, we have been unable to utilize that third floor because of the leakage issue, you know, because of the roof and the water coming in. So when that roof is fixed and we know for sure that we can make full use of that third floor, it's gonna open up a lot more possibilities for displays and, you know, just for visitors and things. Because right now, it's just used for storage in the areas that aren't safe from water damage.
Is the corridor up there?
No, that's second floor.
Second corridor, okay. And it has a trickle down to that second floor?
Where the major leak is, it has, in the, in the stairway, there's, yeah, it's all the way to the main floor that there is some water damage in the wall.
Uh-huh.
Um, and so, yeah, we're just really wanting to get that roof fixed so we can take care of that.
Well, hopefully, Mr. Gilbertson can get out and get that fixed.
Because when you go into the Heritage Center, you go up the stairs, it's, you know, it goes up part of this. So it's coming, it comes down on that third floor and it goes over the edge, like over the balcony, you know.
Well, it sounds to me like we gotta use the Facebook page and then we have to get like a big crew together. And we just need to have like a Saturday workday, a little volunteerism when we cut this down. I'll come with a paintbrush.
Well, it is, it's like an important part of our, our downtown community, and, and I, I think, I'm worried, I think, you know, if you put out the call for some help, you know, there'd be people just.
Once we make sure there's no mold.
Right, yeah.
And I know that the change in direction of the Heritage Center has not been popular among some people, but for the vast majority of the public and the people that have visited us and who've interacted with on our Facebook page, they've been really excited. And I think that it has been an unutilized, you know, it's been kind of a hidden gem in our community, and it's really a feeling need for a lot of different things, so we're really excited about that.
So on, on major weekends like, uh, Crazy Days, is it open? And is there a fee to get through for a tour, or is it?
It was open and there's, we, we stopped charging a fee for people to tour the museum because people were leaving.
Sure.
Yeah, we were turning the youth that were interested in the museum looking, and so.
And that's, that's a way to get people in there.
It was, it was something like a twenty-five hundred dollar, it was twenty-five hundred dollars revenue. And we just felt that the amount of people that we were turning away, because we asked, uh, at that point, it was ratio to keep track of that. You know, how many people decided to leave once they saw it was a?
There, there was a fee.
Sure.
What was the fee of that?
Five dollars.
Yeah.
Okay.
So, so minimal, you can't hardly charge less, right?
Yeah.
So what's the plan for the first floor now that all those displays are gone?
So the first floor is, we had the fire chief come and visit us and get occupancy limits set. Um, and then once the, right now, Lisa, they're still working on that ramp and bit in the rear, but what we're planning on doing is having exhibits that move throughout. So rather than having the walls, it's more of an open space. And then we have, um, some exhibits from the Maritime Museum, um, that we're working with the library and also putting some exhibits in their space so that they're accessible there. And then we're planning on doing like arts programming. Um, we had a woodworker that came in and demonstrated using tools from the eighteen eighties. So more, rather than it being to go look at artifacts, what you're doing is you're going and you're seeing use and you can touch. And I think that's kind of the direction that I've learned that a lot of museums are going towards because, um, we're gonna lose that younger generation, they're not necessarily as interested in if they can go online and look at a picture or something and seeing it in person and not being able to touch. So we're trying to do more interactive type activities.
But the more traditional exhibits will still be available on the second and potentially third floors.
Right, and there will be some exhibits still on the main floor, it just won't be the full space used for that.
What's the updated timeline from Lisa, as far as when that ramp will be done?
You know, they're supposed to be done by the end of July, that's what the contract says. So, um, he hasn't told me that it's not going to be done by then. They have the footings all, um, and so.
They're definitely working back there.
Good.
Yeah, the, the whole interactive portion of the museum, in terms of, that is the way things are going from the aspect of, I was in Denver a few weeks ago, and I went to the Colorado History Museum, and they had a couple different exhibits. One was old baseball stuff where you could interact with, uh, baseball bats from like, uh, old time All-Stars and Hall of Famers and stuff. And then the other one was a Lego area where it's Lego Denver. And there was probably a hundred kids back there playing Legos, building, buildings from downtown Denver. So, you know, learning at the same time while doing interactive activities is a big thing, so. Plus, I wouldn't mind seeing eighteen eighties artwork. That's something kind of fun.
Well, he's very, the fact that he did the presentation is very interested in coming back and doing that.
Well, tell, tell me when it's gonna happen.
Alright.
I, I like the looking, I intend to do it.
Just as an aside, Senator Hightkamp, while she was there, was extraordinarily complimentary of the space, so.
With the displays that been moved, you know, have they been thrown at it, or?
I'm building that, no.
Thank you.
It's not cataloging stored.
Yes, we actually are, I mean, we cannot do that.
Okay.
Yeah, just, it's, yeah, there's historical preservation standing there, something like that through.
And we have a, um, database of where everything with a picture, who donated it, a description, and where it's located in the museum. And when, when Jackie Johnson left, she was the last staff member that was able to use it, but Jared Tullman from the library has, um, he's on our board and he's volunteered to help Mandy. And then if there's volunteers who are interested in learning, he was going to do an instruction to kind of show that. So that we will have that as another activity that volunteers can help us with.
And that's one of our, you know, short-term goals is to really build up a volunteer base because it just wasn't, and it disappeared, you know, for, for whatever reason, so, yeah.
Okay, any further questions?
Thank you.
See you then.
Alright.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Well, let's hear it. That's it.
What are you gonna do with the whole?
I'm not missing anything, correct?
Nope, no.
That's it. So I guess we will.
Before, before we do that, just 'cause I saw it again, and I just wanted to, to mention it again, I'll probably do this for the next two years, just so it stays on everybody's radar. I just wanted to remind everybody that the bonds that Ramsey County has issued, the only reason is I saw it on page thirty-nine, uh, the bonds that we have issued, the first ones are callable in twenty-twenty-one. And because how, you know, because of the substantial amount of interest that's charged on those bonds per year, I still believe that if there's a way that we can pay those in advance of when they come due, because it's not, it's not an option not to pay back your bond debt unless you wanna go into default, which I think, I think might be a little bit disconcerting to some of the electors of the county. So I just, I just wanted to bring that back up only because we had passed it and I thought I'd mention it again.
What, what page is that on?
Thirty-nine. And those, what you're seeing there is just our interest charges?
Yeah, that's just the interest. Pass the hat?
Need a big hat.
Okay. Five-three. We're up till then. Tell me the order, please, rise for the.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Minutes of the previous meeting.
Please.
Sorry. We have a motion to approve in a second. Do we have any additions or corrections to the minutes? You're in not all favorable by saying aye.
Aye.
Close in sign, motion carries. Approval of the agenda, I have a couple of things to add in there. We have a, a bank signature authorization form, uh, that I need to sign to approve, uh, putting different people on, uh, signatories on one of our accounts. I'd like to put that on, and then also a discussion about, uh, moving the meeting time for our second meeting of September. Also, if you could put that on.
Move to approve the agenda as amended.
Okay. Okay, we have a motion to second to approve the agenda as amended, and those are both orders of business. Further discussion. You're in not all favorable by saying aye.
Aye.
Close in sign. Curious. Brad?
Hello.
Hello.
Since my first time, I own the drill, right up here?
Yes, you're right, right there.
Man?
Yes, absolutely.
Great. Thank you, it's, uh, great being here, uh, in front of the city and, and now it's the county. I know a few of you, I haven't done wrong there, I need everybody, I'm trying to do that, but.
Yeah, but I don't buy it.
Thank you, I can see that in the tag.
Chair for us?
Yeah, great.
Mark for us?
I'm David Marks, deputy honor, filling in for Candy.
Filling in for Candy.
You don't.
And I've, I've got a lot of time to chat, and a lot of time to look, so. I'm excited to be here, it's, uh, I told the city, uh, I was trying to avoid them, I wasn't trying to avoid you, but, uh, I put it off for as long as I could, but, uh, the budget came up, and, uh, so that's why I am here, but. I've been driving through, uh, Devil's Lake for forty years, my wife's from Union, is, uh, from the Dolly County, and, uh, the, the community's changed, it's, it's, it's been a lot through the years, you know? And, uh, we made a decision to get closer to her mother who's in Union, and, uh, get me close to Devil's Lake. So I feel pretty uniquely qualified to, uh, to sell Devil's Lake in the community and the region and the county, obviously. I've been through the county many a times and, uh, I'm looking forward to it. But, uh, the budget, uh, is, is there for you, I'm sure you all have it packaged. You know, I haven't done, I've been, next week will be a full two months of days, so I've got about thirty-five, forty days, I suppose, uh, calendar-wise that I put to, put in. But you see the projected budget for two thousand eighteen. It's obviously, we're gonna be, uh, under, uh, the projections as far as expenses because the position was open for January through, uh, May twenty-first, so those dollars are there. Uh, I played with it a little bit, uh, computer system and a couple of things for software that I really feel, or the time that I've been there, we need to have, you can see those numbers reflected in the operations area, uh, and webpage expenses. So we work real closely with the chamber and, and will continue to do that, they haven't passed. Uh, we're a three-legged stool in our life, you got Economic Development, you have tourism, and you have the chamber, but we really have to work in lockstep, and the website, uh, is in redesign stage, and that's coming up, so some of our share of the dollars are, are reflected in that category. So that's where the numbers are a little bit different, and, and I've got an extensive network. Uh, prior to being here, I, uh, first of all, I spent twenty-five, thirty years in the software industry, ten of which in Florida. I'm, uh, originally from the Barnes and Minnesota area. If you've ever driven from Moorhead or Farwood to Minneapolis, you drove through our farm. We were Highway ninety-four and Highway nine is where we farmed. Uh, I kinda put that out of business, small farmer, just did, took too much land, and kinda lost the interest when it was split up for that period of time. His youngest hired ham, except it was me at about eleven or twelve years old in that timeframe, I couldn't drive one truck from one side of the, a road to the other because of the construction, and the long story short, we were out of it, but, uh, that is the area that I grew up and we came back and we continually moved a little bit closer to family. It's really, it's been by design, a little bit out, out of design for my wife because of her mother getting a little bit older, but, uh, that's really why we're back. And, uh, once again, I'm back because of, uh, the amenities, the community and the region has to offer, so. If there's any questions that you guys have, fire away.
Uh, my understanding, Brad, was that Ford Devil's Lake did not have CRM software prior to this year, is that correct?
Yeah, and we really still do not have it, you know, I'm in the process trying to get it. You know, being a, a former software salesperson, a guy that has been relationship oriented, I think it's real important to leave the, the office and the job so that others can see the relationships and the contacts and connections that have been made. We just didn't have that in place. We've got database, the names and numbers, but not, you know, kind of an ongoing record, and that, that's it, that's an important thing. If you're a sales manager, you make sure your sales reps all leave that information for the next one stepping in, right? Well, this job's no different, you know, I'm looking at it that same way. So that's something that I'm trying to go through right now, and I, as part of my ninety-day plan, I said that I'd be aggressive, but I have one in place, and I'm not quite there yet, Commissioner, but I'm getting close, uh, to have it. And, and, you know, you have to be careful in today's world, uh, you want an integrated, well, a cloud-based data, so I'd spend a little bit of time, probably end up with a Microsoft product as well. But yeah, thank you for that question, that's what we're doing.
What other, uh, additions or changes do you see needing to make to Ford Devil's Lake to strengthen it in the next, say, one hundred eighty days?
You know, when I, uh, got the opportunity and interviewed Paul Lucy, uh, former Commerce, uh, Commissioner, was a consultant, and, and FDL, uh, did hire him to do kind of a Commissioner Chairman Strategic Plan, I guess, we would call it, I would call it complete strategic plan, but really a kind of a, a little bit of goal, uh, map, if you will, going forward. Uh, there's a lot of things that are there, uh, there are a few that I agree with and a few that I'm not agreeing as much with. Workforce is one of them, it was, it was voted to be like number twelve in the issues. And in my past, in timeframe, in working with this, in the industry, in the state, workforce is a big one, you know? Getting the employees and then the type, the right type of employees. Now, we've got people here that might be underemployed to move around, but for some of the jobs, that's gonna be real difficult, depending on the company coming in, so. So the plan's somewhat in place, and I, you know, like I say, it's just kind of a work in process with myself and the board. Commissioner's on the board, obviously, and, you know, we've talked a little bit, Lucas, about some of the challenges. There's a lot of, a lot of strengths about the region that I, I, I look forward to, to trying to expand on and see what we can do and bring in that primary sector business or two over the next couple of years that really helps that community grow. But at the same time, we're gonna try to concentrate on entrepreneurship, we gotta grow our own as well. Uh, in my past, I've done entrepreneur bootcamps, both in working as a Small Business Development Center person. I was, uh, the foundation alumni business development person in NDSCS for about eight years. I went to school there, that's where I met. I went to school there, that's where I met my wife, I met a lot of people from North Dakota, being from Minnesota. A lot of the jobs that that college, just like Lake Region State College has, are important jobs for the state, and we've got to find ways of getting our youth to slide into those and then keep them in the region. So those are just some of the things I work on at Workforce. We did a good job, I think, there, and I met with President Darling, I think there's even more things we can do to help them there with some of the experience that I have. So that's not really primary sector development, that's helping workforce, working with a major employer and partner in the college a little bit. But thank you for that question. Any others, or any questions at all on the budget? I don't want you to take the money away. That thirty-three that's there, you know, I've got some good ideas, you know, I guess I'm saying, trust me, but, you know, one of the things I think you have to sell, to sell, you have to show, you know, for those of you that are showing, and I think I've got to get people here. And, you know, there's some people that might not start a business here, but the people they know and they associate with, whether it's in Fargo or Bismarck. I was on a phone call today to a business in Glenwood, that's an employee-owned type business, they bought three employee-owned type businesses. I think they would be a great type of company for here, it's the type of company that's ag-related, you know. We have to have wins, obviously, there haven't been as many wins as you'd like for the region, obviously, I mean, I've read the papers. Louise, my mother-in-law kept fifteen of them every time I came back, so I mean, I caught up. Didn't take me hours, but I read them all. You know, so those are some of the things that I'll be trying to do, is get more people to the area. I really, and I think to sell, you gotta sell why I'm here, I'm here mainly because of mother-in-law, but Commissioner, you know the other reason why I'm here? I can fish Monday night, and I can fish on a world-class fishery that is a big job to a lot of people, and a lot of business people, and to a lot of workers, and we've got to find the jobs that match up, training those type of people. That's my philosophy, you know. I'm going to work my butt off to make that happen. This is close to my last job, hopefully, career-wise, so that's the plan. Other questions? Commissions? Thank you for your time, Commissioner and Chairman, I appreciate it. I haven't had to do this type of presentation in the past in front of the commissioners, it's been more boards and whatnot, but I appreciate that, the opportunity.
Thanks for coming.
Great.
We won't bite.
They're talking to the city commissioner, I'm not sure they won't.
We're a little more laid-back, hopefully.
Yeah, we're teddy bears. I'll remember that six months from now. Thank you all.
Thank you, Brad, appreciate it. Okay, Kevin, budget first?
Yeah.
Okay.
Page twenty-three we'll start off. I don't remember, so is that the Blacktop?
Uh, Blacktop, yes.
Yeah, all right, starting out, that's two hundred thousand this year, includes twenty-five thousand for current soft spots on federal labor routes, overlay patching, seventy-five thousand. And going by our five-year road plan, our next project is three A, south of Hammond. So we'll do the design engineering on that for a thin-laced overlay, that's fifty thousand. And I got fifty thousand in there for that surface and structural survey for our asphalt roads. I'm not sure if that will get done this year or next year, but it's in next year's budget, I'm sure. Next page, any questions, I guess? Okay, next page, county roads, that's the one that is Mills General for tax dollars. Those salaries are for just administrative, myself and Brett, and it's going by the numbers that can be provided for everyone. Fixed charges, I left that the same as last year. I haven't used that total amount, so I just used my unused amount for the increase that we're going to be seeing this year, if that makes sense. Capital outlay. There's equipment rental in there for fifteen thousand. Culverts for resale for a hundred thousand, and then some purchase, equipment purchase for a hundred thousand. And I was looking at getting a trade-off for backhoe loader for a little mini excavator, or a big mini excavator, probably the biggest mini they make. And they're about eighty thousand outright without the trade-in. Next line is the construction, that included gravel in four A. That comes from Highway seventeen north to the county line, like north of the Frizzy Farm. That's seventy-five thousand, and the other gravel project we have next year is nine A, that'd be like from State Highway twenty to north of Starkweather, and east to the Hammond, which is eighty thousand. I also got let's see. Ten thousand for ag water. Now, that ten thousand doesn't include the military, the terminal road next year, I don't know how that's going to work out, but that's not part of that. That would be another six or seven thousand if we included that next year. Just see where.
The mini excavator, that would eliminate ranking a big one there?
No, it would just, our backhoe loader, the loader in the front, the back, on the back patch just won't work out, we need to replace it. That's kind of the trend, everybody's going with the little mini, because they're.
When's the last time we gravelled nine A?
It's on a six-year rotation, is what I'm getting, right?
Yeah, for some reason I was thinking, so we gravelled nine, must have been east of the half of three then?
Yes, we did.
So we did last year, correct?
No, that'd be two years.
Two years ago, okay, because I was just, for some reason I had it in my head that we did it like last year or two years ago.
It was with the oil impact money.
Yeah.
The first year of the oil impact money, so it had been three years ago.
Okay.
Yeah, it's not that long, though.
Well, then, I just remember it for some reason, it's sticking in my head, I was just curious, so.
Somebody brought up that east of three up there, by Iverson Home Building?
Iverson?
And put a lot of soft spots in there, I don't, and up there.
East of three? Boy, that one's harder than that. There's some soft spots west of three.
West, there is west of.
Yeah, west of three, I told that a few weeks ago.
So we're gravelled that next year, and then next year we'll also put the concrete or the Portland cement in the soft spots before we gravel.
Should shape it up now with drier weather, or?
Uh, it has, yes, like all the soft spots around, but they're still going around with a couple of them, there's one with a missile base there that's.
Pretty rough one.
Yeah. Otherwise, there was three bad ones, and there's probably one that's bad now.
Maybe a few rates west.
Yep, there is probably three that were really bad, it's great.
Wow, okay.
And then the last one is miscellaneous, we have a hundred and fifty thousand there. Any questions on that? Wait, is there a second page on that?
Oh, okay.
Any questions on that one?
Just for everybody, so you know, if you go behind, he's got line items on all this stuff, too, a few pages back, so. I don't think I've seen that yet, as you know. It's actually laid out for you. Okay, on to.
County Bridge?
I have wrote a bit, I've zeroed out. So County Bridge.
Okay, County Bridge is, we have in this, in the five-year road plan, there's two of them that we're going to replace next year for sure. And I just got budgeted for a third one in case something comes up. So I got fifteen thousand for equipment rental and seventy-five thousand for collars and gravel on that person. Any questions there?
I feel that's adequate.
Yeah, you know, we're getting caught up on these, they always pop up, but we are getting caught up, so there should get to be fewer and fewer. I think it's adequate, yeah. This is, highway tax is the one that's generated from fuel tax and revenue from vehicle registration and that type of stuff, so. This isn't generated through the property tax. But the salaries are, but the million numbers for all of our workers for what Kenny gave us. And again, I left my fixed charges the same. It doesn't look like it, does it? I must have missed the line there. If you go back to the line item one.
Yeah, six charges, the same back there.
The fixed charges are two hundred thousand, I left them the same.
Yeah, it's, we're missing any seasonal overtime, is that thirty thousand line?
Seasonal overtime's thirty thousand, like snow removal, that type of stuff, and then we have a five thousand for unemployment. Like somebody files for unemployment, that's a fact of the law.
That's just the question that they're doing, that guy brought up at the social service, how often did you use that unemployment?
Just about every year, you know, it doesn't hardly ever add up to five thousand, but seems like we always end up paying something. Social service don't have it under budget, do they get any payments?
There's one, just probably had one this year.
Yeah, we had a discussion for the last night.
We talked about putting one on the county wire, did that make sense?
Sure, well, we don't get them very often, but I had a guy retire, and then went to work for a different contractor, and then got laid off there, and then he filed for unemployment, and then we ended up paying unemployment even though he retired, I mean, I'm not sure all this stuff works, to be quite honest with you. Unemployment will catch you by surprise in an incident.
Well, I can tell you that the century code, because I had it printed out for me last night, what unemployment is twenty-three pages. I'm guessing it takes a lawyer to figure out how it works, it's pretty complicated, I, we went through it last night after the meeting, it's like your house, do you say? Yeah, it's, there's a lot of stuff that goes into it on who pays, who doesn't pay, self-insurance, essentially, that kind of stuff, so.
So like I say, it doesn't amount to a lot in years' time, but they have it, huh? Yeah.
Okay.
And then the fixed charges, I guess that's printed around on there, but it's two hundred thousand, the same as it was last year. And then going down to insurance, our vehicle insurance went up a little bit, so I raised that. Everything else pretty much stayed the same, the workman's comp and building insurance, and drug and alcohol testing, stayed pretty much the same, so. Education and travel, I did leave that the same, you know, I'm not sure if I get on the NACO board with that amount, too, a lot of that's paid for, but I did leave it the same. Utilities, it's like electricity, heat, home, water, garbage. I didn't raise, I just raised that a thousand. Don't see too many increases going on there. Office supplies, we have to pay for the other half of our computer software that we bought this year, which is a little over five thousand dollars. So that's the increase there. Gas, oil, and fuel, that's just shooting from the hip, I raised it ten thousand. Never let's just a guess where that's going to come out, but. Supplies and materials, that's like our sand, ground, rock, cutting edges even, snowblades, filters, tires, road oil, all of our supplies and materials, and I just raised that like four thousand dollars. Repairs and maintenance, the same, I raised five thousand dollars. And then capital outlay. And building maintenance, so we included in that capital outlay, and I left that the same. That's it for that one, I guess. Any questions there?
Nope, County Road?
Yeah, County Road, that's our chip seal program, and next year we're chip sealing eight A, just west of Webster, eight, what, or east of Webster, and then all the roads around town here that we paved, we'll chip seal them. Paved this year, chip sealing next year. They'll tell you all of those ones. So that's fifty, five hundred and sixty-one thousand, the chip sealing is four hundred thousand, chips are fifty thousand, striping, which includes the current ones we chipped and the ones we did three years ago. And I got eleven thousand in there for chip sealing the Cove Road, which is a third, figuring, estimating a third of what the total project would cost. Any questions there? And then the last one is, you know, right?
Blood debt.
Yep, blood debt. So in two thousand nine, I budgeted ninety-seven thousand five hundred, that's really close to actual dollars. We're at the point where we're not going to have any more claims on two thousand nine, two thousand ten, and two thousand eleven, so we have the option of transferring those dollars into our general accounts if we want to. Now, we don't have to, we can leave them sit there, we can do, it's what it is, it's administrative money, it's the money they gave us for running the program, and some of those disasters, there was some overtime which came out of the administrative money, but this is what's left over from all the administrative money.
There are no bills to pay in those three years.
Okay.
What's the advantage of doing it, taking it in and into the general?
If there's a shortfall in the tax or something, my thought was maybe like next year, next year, this time, we'll be budgeting for water graders. We could use it for that. And they're perfectly fine with that.
But now. It'd go a long way.
Yes, it would. We could almost pay cash for it, you know, instead of borrowing from them. So, I budgeted for it, but if we don't use it, we don't, and if we get into jam or something, I guess. Two thousand thirteen, there was actually two disasters that year, and there is still some money that could be used there, but that's our budget, it was the actual dollars in there. We still have some claims to pay for gravel work.
Okay. Any questions? There's a lot of stuff there.
Yes, yeah, I have one for cemeteries, too, I didn't have that shit good.
Yeah, do we have cemeteries in here, or do you know?
Anyway, I'm sure, you still.
The cemeteries are still there, they just don't have a list.
And I forgot to ask for it, too, it's probably my fault, I remember to ask Candy if somebody could get it, but I didn't do it.
Well, it's a small enough thing that you can.
It stayed the same as last year, sixty-five hundred.
Yeah.
How many do we need to take care of there?
How many do I have? Thirteen, I think, thirteen or fourteen?
It's on the top of page eight.
Oh, yes. On eighteen? Oh, right here, there you go, very good. That's a pretty good line.
Is there even a cat?
It's not a dollar, yeah, it's not, it's not old.
Does any cat get to them?
Yes, there is, someone gets to. Just trying to look the other way. There must be one, two, three, probably four that I don't know. But I don't know what to do about it either, I mean. But I don't know what to do about it either. I mean, you can't get there. There is. There's a boat. There's one out here in Odessa that you gotta go through part of the field.
Yeah, that's the one we work at.
Do we do that in the fall?
Generally, yes.
Yes.
Just to keep the trees in, or anything like that.
Let's try to keep doing that.
Yeah. Once they get the crop off, we go through the field.
Is that Chain Lake Home accessible yet?
That's another one that is. One by um, Jake, uh, who's the water person up there? It's gone. Anyway.
Webster.
Joel Storst.
Joel Storst, you know, there was one by him that he got to.
That's Chain Lake.
Oh, is it? Well, there's another one north of there, north of Gordy Collins. They're around.
Yeah, that one is uh, I think that's like a US Fish and Wildlife.
Could be.
Under Great Gales.
I guess Joel probably wanted to be buried, wanted to do one.
I think he did. He might be there.
He wanted to do uh, Chain Lake.
He, he might have got there to the wintertime or while they did it. I think he is there.
And it's kind of on high ground.
Yep, two fields.
Well, his plot was on high ground.
Well, the cemetery is high. You know, you just can't get through it. There's no way of beating it. Okay. So it's sixty-five hundred, that's pretty much what it runs. Any questions on any of the budget stuff before we move on? Seeing nothing. Okay.
All right. Project update, updates. The striping on our chip seal job is done. We called in to come to take the signs on. They haven't got that done yet, but. So that's, that's where we're on. On the graveling on Ramsey Nine for six by Sauson and four north of Sauson. This is gonna start next week. So percent. Any questions on those two? Bridge work, uh, I got a tentative date of September twentieth. The bridge, the steel is on its way from the coast, so it should be here a week from Thursday. A week from Thursday, and then they'll start building it right away. They jockeyed their plans around, so they're gonna start working on it right away. And they're figuring three weeks to build it, so that makes it September twentieth. August twentieth.
August twentieth. I was gonna say September.
I get like, oh, I don't know, the snowball.
No, August twentieth isn't due yet. Okay.
So I will keep up the speed on that, 'cause that might change. It might be a week ahead, might be a couple days after.
Spend all the rest of the year to build.
Yeah.
Yeah, they'll work you out or something, huh?
Yeah, that's all. Um, Sons of Jacob Cemetery, they gravelled that yesterday morning, so that's done now. Um, Mike said he was gonna have all the board members send letters to Gowron thanking him. Just gonna let you know that. He was taking care of that. He took some pictures and hopefully sent it.
From page eight.
Awesome.
Yeah, and he, I believe I would say luckily that we decided to send to Gowron already, so that's from us, so.
Yeah.
It's probably already received.
Any questions there? Harry Center Hook, I guess you heard Mandy say that Gilbertson agreed to have three guys work for a couple of hours up there and fix what's easy to see, I guess. See, they know it's damaged and then see if it leaks out for that. And when I was there, they didn't give us a date, but Mandy said next week, so.
Do you think that'll work, Kevin?
I don't know, I'm skeptical, but I hope it does. I mean, if Mike thinks it will, so you gotta go with that, right? Um, basically, stabilization bids on a truck, uh, we didn't get any bids. I sent out five, to five contractors. Close, Strata, Gowron, Night River and Mayo. Didn't get one bid back, so not sure how I'll handle it. I wait till next spring or try signing out bids again or.
Why do you do that then?
They said they were all busy. I called a few of them up. They said they just, so I thought.
Can't fit it in.
Yeah.
Well, I guess if none of them could fit it in and it was in our area, we're pretty much just gonna have to wait till next year, I suppose.
I think if we get bids out early before they get their season plan.
I mean, it's not gonna, hopefully we stay somewhat, you know, it's in pretty good shape for the fall sale, so. If we can dare knock that next time, that'll be okay. Okay.
Oh, and then the construction engineering for uh, our Kinnick Overlay project this summer. Uh, Paul has got together the contract for that. And then he put a top layer of those desks.
And the breakdown of the hours, the, the area will take, um, the wood sheet attached to it. On the boat, you know, sixty percent of it is natural mainline paving, but there's, you know, paving approaches and the dig out, it's gonna take some time. Lots of that's all spelled out in there. One set of rumble strips at the intersection of Wild Drive and Highway nineteen out there. Fading markings, you know, we got everything real, real detailed out there. Our estimated hours. Must be a couple, I mean, probably eight to eleven acts, so it's on the. We gotta conditionate it for final out here to make any first payment. We're getting all our substantive DOT. And since it has federal funds in it, it's got, you know, three different sources of funding. SC funds, that's the state federally. Let's say only split stuff, CNLC, that's the third round of the oil money. And then there's some local funds obviously too. And split federally, then we have brings in all the DOT requirements, there's a, their card system online, put all the records there.
So if we're okay with this, we have a motion to approve the term of signing that.
Approve to approve. Second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second to approve signing the passport of, of contract with ALJ for the Kinnick Overlays. Further discussion. See, now in favor, vote by same or not.
Aye.
Aye.
Vote same side. Motion to approve. Yes. Thank you, Paul.
And their fund, the last I heard was they're gonna start the week of August third or August tenth. Um, that's June now, yeah. Or so. Do you guys want to stand those or not?
Okay.
It doesn't have to be uh, bill of holdings or?
Just like sign the contract.
Yeah, just signing, since we're not, you know, we're not spending any money on it yet, so. We're not gonna pay the contract until it's finalized, correct?
It's like.
Yeah, we pay it, we're done. Monthly bills.
Yeah, there you go.
Okay. Not all of that, huh? All right.
Thank you, Kevin.
Thank you, Kevin.
Okay. On to unfinished business from the previous meeting. Uh, the policy changes in the employee handbook. We tabled that so we could get further information about surrounding counties. And I see Crystal is here to give us some information.
So did you guys get, all get the information with the county comparisons and salary? I wanna give an example of what a payout would be.
Yep.
Uh, was there any questions on that or?
I got that all, good, Crystal came to you.
Yeah.
Put that together.
Yeah, I think it's very thorough, so.
And I, I kinda wanted you guys to get an idea where people are sitting with balances within the county employees, just so you have an idea. That were, you know, how close they are to the caps and stuff like that, where the years of service are that come in there, to give you a better idea.
All those are with, in hours, not days. Is that correct?
Correct.
They're accumulated?
Yeah, we've got currently a one seventy-six cap on vacation and a nine sixty cap on sick.
Correct, yeah.
And, and they're both set up to pay out one-sixth and that would not change under the new policy.
Um, just that's.
The vacation is.
Totally, vacation's totally right now. That's right. Okay, I'm sorry. I'm thinking backwards.
So you're going to go from one seventy-six to two forty?
Right.
And just for reference sake, uh, I had them pull the merit system stuff that the state uses yesterday. And the state is at, is at two forty cap. Um, uh, but that rolls out every April first. Uh, well, and for social services, it would roll out on January first. So, and it's a full payout. And then they have, I'm trying to remember on sick leave from the state, um.
I think theirs is ten percent of unlimited.
Yes, they pay ten percent unlimited sick leave.
Yeah.
So there's no cap on the sick.
Yeah, and then there's also this script in there after ten years of continuous service.
Yes. Yeah, and you can't get paid out on anything till after ten years of service.
Right. And now that was brought up in the department head meeting when we were reviewing this policy. And I know there was a couple that are, there was, it was kind of mixed about adding that to the policy that after ten years. However, that does just bring the liability for the county down just a little bit more and it gives an employee a little bit more incentive to stay with the county. So I, I, I guess it would be up to you guys if we would want to leave a statement in there like that.
Yeah, I can't remember on the policies that we looked at last time, how, is the accrual of this, of the annually, but not really very similar to the state's policy.
You know, I guess I could look at the state's accrual rates.
The, the accrual rates are, are based off of obviously years of service. Um, zero through three years of service, you accrue eight hours per month. Four through seven, ten, eight through twelve, twelve, thirteen through eighteen, fourteen, and then over eighteen, sixteen hours per month. So you're accruing, you know, two days per month. The, the only reason for, for reference, I, I looked up, I didn't look up the state policy for me was. And I, I don't have a problem with looking at it from a county aspect about what other counties around us are doing, because I think it's a good comparison sake. But I think the state, especially in our area, is a good comparison, because if you think about the employees that are under this policy, twenty-eight of them are social services. And how many do you have, Kevin?
Twelve.
Twelve. So forty of our sixty-five employees are, their nearest comparison for a job would be a state job. State Highway Department Human Services Center, something like that, or another county around us. So just for comparison sake, more than anything, is kind of what I was trying to put my head around, just to see if we're in the ballpark or. And, and, you know, by, by the note here, I'm telling you comparisons, there's quite a few of them that are at thirty now.
Where's the city at?
The city cap's out at two forty, but they allow you to accrue over that and then you just have to be down to two forty by the beginning of the year.
So very similar, very similar to the states.
Crystal, you didn't check out the city?
You know what, I didn't. And maybe that's one that I should be comparing as men looking at policies. I can, I can see if I can get a copy of their policies.
I, I had just gotten that, 'cause I was also reviewing ours, so, yeah. No, I know, I'm just.
City and county have to stay pretty hand and all.
But it certainly, certainly happened with wages. You know, I think the city is, is way ahead of, of the county in, in wages and they're steps and grades. So, I don't know if we wanna get down that rabbit hole. You know, I, I think what Crystal has done is, is very good and I think we need to treat our employees with, you know, the respect that they deserve. Um, and I don't think that, you know, going from the two forty or one seventy-six to two forty is, is out of line with any counties or, or the state of North Dakota. Um, and I don't think that we're gonna get a mass exodus of employees that all of a sudden retire that are maxed out. I don't think it's gonna put an undue burden on, on county taxpayers if all of a sudden we get sixty-five employees that wanna retire at once. You know, certainly we'll have, you know, some that, you know, like with any business, that, you know, we get that baby boomer generation that, you know, within a five-year time period, you're gonna have five, ten retirees, but. We're gonna have that anyway.
I, I agree with everything that you said, Jeff, and I think I made a motion the last time this was brought up, but I will make a motion to have it be adopted.
I'd say.
Motion to adopt all the, all the policies we looked at last time, then, correct?
Yeah.
So we have a motion in a second to adopt, uh, the entirety of the policies, weekly changes, um, that we looked at last meeting. Further discussion on that motion. Okay, hearing none. Roll call please.
Chris.
Aye.
Olson.
Aye.
Wakefield.
Aye.
Brown.
Aye.
Lightmore.
Aye. Motion carries.
Thank you, Crystal.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good work for the policy.
Okay. Move on to new business. Approval of the West End Dyke O N M. It's bigger this month than you.
About nineteen-two fifty-nine thirty-seven.
Yeah. And we're usually tracking around fifteen thousand a quarter. And if, if you look at the packet, I think part of it had to do with, is, uh, one of the pump stations that we're responsible for. They had to do a pump replacement, which was about five thousand dollars of the cost, or a, a large repair. So that's what accounted for the cost difference.
We'll go through it.
Second.
We have a motion in a second to approve, uh, the O N M for the costs. Further discussion on it. Roll call please.
Chris.
Aye.
Olson.
Aye.
Wakefield.
Aye.
Brown.
Aye.
Lightmore.
Aye. Motion carries.
Mr. General. Was the state looking at paying for that in the future? There was some talk.
The federal government actually.
That's what I was gonna actually bring up. I sat in on the water infrastructure meeting with Senator Hightower on Sunday afternoon. Uh, we actually went to the East End pumping station up there behind Walmart. Uh, she tacked an amendment on the, uh, Water Resources Development Act bill that's rolling through the Senate. Uh, and it will put a seventy-five percent cost share federal on paying the O N M costs. So we'll only have to pick up twenty-five percent of the total costs, uh, somewhere in that, 'cause the core will take over the run. So it'll probably actually be like a seventy, thirty, 'cause there's some embedded costs, but it's gonna be a, a, a good thing.
If it goes through.
If it goes through. It's not on the House side, but she, it's, it's, it's in the bill on the Senate side. She was fairly confident they'll be able to get it through before it's all said and done. Our costs are about sixty thousand a year. The cities are about two hundred and twenty-five thousand a year on the O N M costs. So if you take, you know, seventy-five percent of two hundred and twenty-five hundred and sixty, it's, it's, it's a good chance, good amount of money to do something else with, so.
It's a pretty impressive facility out there, isn't it?
It's huge. It's, it's, it's larger than it probably is. That's my opinion.
Had that on our water tours before and that's a, that's an impressive structure.
They can pump three hundred and thirty gallons per minute. That's insane amount of water. What do you think about it? They could pump more water out of that station than East and West End Elbets can plant.
The one on the West End is bigger.
Yeah, that's it.
Or in the head or?
Yeah, they're, they're, they're just massive pump stations. The, the one is?
Really?
I didn't realize that.
Interesting.
Whole world.
Apparently the pump's double.
I've never seen that one. I've seen that one. I just haven't been to see the East one. I said that one was bigger.
I, I, not, not to digress from the meeting, but I think the most interesting portion of it is, is when you turn the pumps on, it's got a pre-greaser. So it greases the pump before it turns on. And I thought, boy, that'd be a fantastic thing if I could put it on the combine.
Did they say how often they turn mine out?
Uh, they test them occasionally. Yeah, I, no, I didn't, I didn't, yeah, I didn't catch how often they turn on. But they do get used, yeah, just, not much, but they do get used, but I just thought the pre-grazing element of it was really interesting. And I thought, boy, if I could just press a button, then I wouldn't have to spend an hour maybe greasing up meat.
I don't want to be stuck in the hole.
That's great. Okay, that's taken care of. Approval of our raffle permit.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second to approve the raffle permit. Further discussion. See now, in favor, vote by same or not?
Aye.
Oppose, same side. Motion carries.
Motion carries. Uh, approval of the LEC intercom surveillance agreement.
This is the one we discussed, was it two years ago?
Yes, uh, I think Rob could probably enlighten us a little more, but essentially, the city wanted to rewrite the agreement.
No, but I, I had requested, the city wanted to have an agreement with the LEC regarding the engineering costs for the project, and I had asked them to include Ramsey County in on that. Since it's the project, is the, the city and the county are sharing that. Uh, so, I, it took me a while, but I finally got, uh, an updated copy of it. So, so that Ramsey County's included in on it.
Oh, okay, so we just weren't on it before.
Correct.
Okay. Okay, so, so we just get a motion to approve it signed again, 'cause it's no different than before, half and half on twenty-six thousand dollars.
Motion to approve.
Okay, motion, we have a second. We have a second, further discussion on that. Seeing none, all in favor, vote by saying aye.
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 Vote same side. Motion carries. Approval of a special permit, that was on our desk, correct?
Um, it was on me, so.
Yes, it's for.
It was just received Monday, so.
Okay.
Move to wedding, yeah?
Um, Pearson, I believe, so.
Do they have, do they have that in?
Yes, there's also a, um, a hundred dollar penalty fee for, for not being there three days, so the seventy-five dollars and then an extra one hundred. And two checks here.
Okay, but they do have a map and all that stuff, but they're close, which is, we only got the front page of it.
Yep, yep.
That's what I was asking, where is that?
Yep.
Okay.
Motion to approve.
Okay. Motion to approve and a second, so a special permit for Oklahoma, further discussion. Seeing none, all in favor, vote by saying aye.
Aye.
Vote same side. Motion carries.
Okay, uh, approval of bank signature authorization, just for information. It's for Bremer Bank, um, we just are putting, uh, Lisa, Candy, Jackie, and Nathan, uh, 'cause Nathan was never put on, or Jackie, I believe.
Everybody was on.
So, this will allow them to sign checks at the border, I don't know.
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve this, uh, signing sheet. Further discussion. Seeing none, all in favor, vote by saying aye.
Aye.
Vote same side. Motion carries, and this is the actual copy?
That is the actual copy.
Yes, on four eighty-five, looking back, yes.
Okay, uh, second meeting of September. Um, Fisher Wakefield, uh, brought it to my attention last night that after the links, uh, the district health meeting, district health meeting and board meeting. They're not gonna have the final, uh, budget approval ready until the second meeting of, uh, September. Uh, and everyone else meets at eight AM. And we have to do the big conference call like we always have to do, would it be okay if we moved the second meeting from that five-thirty normal time until up to an eight AM, so we don't have to come in twice?
What's the date on that?
Uh, oh, gosh, uh, when?
Seventeenth?
Seventeenth.
No, no, eighteenth.
Oh, eighteenth, eighteenth, yeah, I'm sorry, yeah. Something what did you do? And I haven't talked to Candy about it yet, but, uh, this period, I, I would, I don't think we have to make the decision now, but just for informational sake.
Yeah, and, and the reason that they're asking is, uh, the, the finalized budget is due October tenth, so technically we'd have the seventh available. But. Uh, Al McKay was concerned that that would only give them three days if there was any kind of hiccups or anything, but.
Oh, October seventeenth, we have available, I'm sorry, yes, okay.
So, the seventh of October, we'd have that first meeting, but he was, he was concerned, and I understand why, that given only three days to, to the final budget.
So, they're not gonna have available by September fourth, then?
I don't believe so, he didn't, he, that's not what he requested.
We're gonna get in the preliminary then.
Uh-uh.
Oh, you're gonna get them.
Well, they got the preliminary approved last night, correct?
Oh.
But, but they have to do additional work on the preliminary budget, I suppose. I, I, 'cause I, I think part of it comes down to is, we have to be a month earlier, would be my guess.
Right.
And they're waiting for federal pass-through fund numbers and all that kinda stuff.
That's exactly right.
'Cause they're always waiting on the, the immunization pass-through and all the different grant funding that always is in the district health in their budget. So, he wants as much time as he can get to make sure he gets all the numbers and it's.
And then he was understanding if, if the county commission didn't feel that that was appropriate, but he did request that I request it, and so, I wanted to make sure we did that.
Okay. Do, do we have to have a decision made today, or can we wait and tell?
Well, I'm, I'm sure we can wait.
Okay, I just, first, if I bring it up with everyone to kinda see one, and then we can.
We've got preliminary budget done.
And then more included?
And why do we have to wait till the second meeting, or is it better?
I don't know.
You don't, you don't hold them to the same August tenth?
No, the prelim is August tenth.
Oh.
The final is October tenth.
Correct, yeah.
Okay.
Which is, yeah, because the finalized date doesn't change. The reason they moved the prelim date up is we have to do that truth and taxation thing, I don't even know what the technical name of it is, but they changed the law on the seventeen section. So, we have to send out that preliminary tax board or whatever. That we're gonna end up getting checks on, I would guess.
When's the first meeting, October?
Seven?
Seven.
Seven, yeah.
No. That would be a Sunday.
Uh, ninth.
Oh, I'm sorry, yeah, ninth.
Ninth, so, no, it was the minute. Second.
Second.
Well, the second, yeah.
Yeah.
Section six.
Which would be the second.
Well, maybe he was, maybe he was wrong.
He must have his dates mixed up, I would say let's hold off, check with him, and say the second of October gives him a whole week before the tenth.
Yeah, right, and that, that.
Yeah.
Okay, that's fine.
Okay, well, it's gonna be talked about, 'cause we just cut, cut that, so. Check with him, and then we can always, uh, deal with it on the first date of August.
Well, and, you know, if it's as important to him, I can just ask him to be here and explain why he may wanna do that, so. Like, that would make the most sense.
Okay, um. Technically, uh, we have to need a motion to table it until next meeting, or?
Yeah, I'll move to table it.
Second.
Motion and a second to table, talking about second meeting September, further discussion. Seeing none, all in favor, vote by saying aye.
Aye.
Vote same side. Motion carries, and it is tabled. Okay, visitors, delegations. No point.
Rob is sat there the whole time just to watch.
I hope that's, I was on there twice.
You were, that's a good point. That's a good point, you were just here for, just here for information's sake, right? Announcements? None. I think the only announcement, we, we would have, we have a home rule.
Is tomorrow.
Is tomorrow. The, uh, uh. Twenty-one, what is it, hearing? Yep. The actual official hearing is tomorrow at seven PM?
Seven PM, right.
Yep.
Um, and so, that's been advertised in the paper. I had a letter to the editor submitted today to be in the paper tomorrow, just explaining what it is and why, I hope people will attend. The finalized draft document is available on the website. Uh, after the hearing, it will be, uh, formally approved and then published in the paper. Although, I'm not sure if the county commission has to vote to approve that it be on the ballot before it goes in the paper, or.
Yeah, assuming.
I'll need a check, but, but it's, it's one or the other.
Well, assuming, assuming after the hearing we're okay with it, we approve to, uh, you know.
Right, so, so, to give you a, a good sense of what the timeline will be, uh, we have, and I think my phone's dead, so my calendar's gone, but we, we have one more home rule. Charter committee meeting, I presume, on the twenty-fifth. Uh, I presume that'll be the last meeting of, of the charter committee, at which point we will make any final revisions to the document that, uh, were. Strongly supported by any, uh, members of the community who attended the hearing. Uh, if there are no changes or anything else, then we will vote to bring it to the commission.
With recommendation of the governor.
Right. Um, so, glad we were able to bring it to a conclusion on the original timeline we set. Last year, and then we were almost exactly where we expected we'd be, as far as getting it to, to the county commission. And, uh, Commissioner Leibman mentioned that by bringing it, but by getting it done on the twenty-fifth, this commission will have two meetings. To make a final decision on whether or not they want it on the ballot.
Uh, and I'll, I'll make two mentions, number one, we might actually have to meet following that, 'cause we do, the home rule, if the commit, county commission decides to move it forward to the ballot, then the home rule committee actually has to draft the ballot language. Right. So, we'll have to do that, which isn't a big deal, that's pretty quick. And, and the other thing would be, uh.
But, so, did we not do that at the meeting?
Well, we could, I suppose.
Right, so you do, you do it that meeting, and then it, it matters.
Yeah.
Question was that.
Uh, and then the other thing I would say is, uh, being more on tape, uh, a big thank you to everyone that sat on the home rule committee meeting we had. There was a few knockout, knocked on Drago discussions, not arguments, but a lot of good discussions, and everybody put in a lot of work. So, regardless of what happens with it, it was, it was a, a privilege and an honor served with everyone, so.
Yeah, and I, I absolutely would echo that, and I'm really pleased with the diversity of, of viewpoints that we have on the charter, I mean, we. We really pulled in, I think, a lot of unique perspectives that made it a lot stronger than it would have been otherwise. And fundamentally, I think that, of course, I'm biased as the chair of the charter committee, but fundamentally, I think that it would be a really great thing for this county. And I'm hoping that it will get on the job, but we'll decide that when we decide.
Yeah, you said you had an editorial in tomorrow's paper. Explain.
Just, just in very brief summary. You know. The, the, the summarized version has been available, I, I think I sent it to everybody by email, but I can send it again if you'd like.
Oh, I, I, I have it. Just to, you know. In, in, in future, if you'd like to do that, don't have it put in the paper the date of the meeting, because your rural residents will not receive it. You know.
Well, and this isn't the first time it's been announced.
Well, I, I know.
It was, it, I thought of it as one final additional.
Yep.
You know.
Yeah, it wasn't required.
It's been, it's been on coffee time, it's been in the paper, but I, I do take your point, and I'm sorry that I wasn't on top of it.
It's just a. A stapler was some that, that gave the, the paper a, a day late. And, uh. But they, they should know about it because of all the, everything else that's been in the paper, um, leading up to tomorrow's meeting.
Yeah, and I may have mentioned a little bit previous to the meeting that, uh, to talk to the radio station tomorrow morning, put it on as a PSA all day as well, so they can throw it in. So.
Yep.
So, hopefully they'll do that, they're always really good about doing that, so they'll announce it all day, so hopefully we'll have good turnout, and a lot of good publicity.
About to seven PM?
Seven PM in the honor. And we'll make sure that it, it's fully accessible this time, and I apologize that we, we failed to get that done last time.
I do have a key now, so. Just in case.
But the public may not, so.
Yes, I, I kinda hope they don't, but.
Well.
We try to keep those, keep, keep under lock.
Okay, anything else, uh, or announcements?
Planning and zoning, I don't know if you're able to make it Thursday morning? Okay. We are gonna try to have a meeting Thursday morning, I haven't heard back from all the committee members, I do have a couple that can't make it. If we do hear back from a couple more, um, it'd be no sense in having, you know, reschedule it, but, um. I told those that can't make it, that, you, you know, if we, if we have enough. We need to go ahead and, and. And go ahead with the meeting, um, you know, just to get some. You know, I did send out examples of, uh, wind farm, uh, zoning, I just had, uh, sent out some examples of marijuana zoning that's been done. So, we do need to, to go ahead and take a look at, at some of those, and, and then, uh, we'll move on from there, so. Yeah, it's probably eight-thirty on Thursday, I mean.
I have a different as of my desk, too, if there's a, uh, retirement reception for Brenda on the thirty of July.
What time?
Two to four PM. Short program at three PM. We won't be meeting before that, so if there were committees.
And, and I guess I have been asked, uh, by Bill to, uh. That as a commission, be part of the MC with Ron there. But if you'd like to do that, Adam, I was chairman of the commission, I thought I'd check with you. Since I get on the fair board and now I'm that portfolio.
Yeah, I would be, I would be just fine with you, if I'd like to do it, of course, yeah. I'll try to stop by for Kane. If it's just Kane.
Please, please do so, I'm sure there will.
Hopefully, we're not hurt, just in part, like, and then. Well, thank you, we'll be like.
It's gonna be here?
In the basement, yeah.
Basement, either way.
Okay, any other announcements? Seeing none, we are adjourned.